Mr. Superintendent Smith?
Thank you, President Tru. This resolution before you tonight is identical to the previous two years that this board adopted early notification retirement incentive. If we're notified that someone's retiring prior to our February meeting, we give them a thousand dollars is what the resolution is. And we did it the last couple of years, and so it's just bringing it back for the board to consider again this year.
So you've all seen the, or at least you've had the opportunity to see Board Resolution 1801-1. Can we have a motion to consider or to approve it? Actually, I think that's the recommended motion.
I move that we approve Retirement Incentive 1801-1.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second by Member Wright. Is there discussion?
You expecting any?
No, not really.
No, I mean expecting any retirements. That's not like that. Or you probably can't say even if you were.
Not sure yet.
We'll know next month.
Ms. Held, would you call the roll, please?
Member Wright?
Aye.
Member Wilson?
Hi.
Member Brownall?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 1801-2 is a resolution sponsored by the CSBA. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce that?
Sure. Well, this, this resolution is being requested to be approved by all districts in California to show the solidarity of districts to the state on changing the amount of funding the states provides per student. Although it would not affect us as a basic aid district, it's obvious that I believe we're forty-fifth in the nation in per pupil funding, or thereabouts, mid forties, whatever it is. And that's not acceptable. And so this is going to be delivered to the state, asking them to start funding California pupils at a higher rate. And so it would be showing solidarity with all revenue limit districts in saying the state needs to provide more funds for those students. However, we could have some small benefits if the state were to adopt and change their funding levels. We would mainly be affected in things like our apportionment for special ed and other mandated type reimbursements from the state, but it would not affect our basic aid revenues.
Well, is there a motion to approve? I do have a question that I...
I'll have a motion.
Mr. Wilson moves that we approve Resolution 1801-2. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Member Friend, second. The comment and question I have, this was also the agenda, on the agenda of the San Luis Coastal meeting last night, and one of the board members did a dramatic reading of the entire resolution because he said, "This is really important." And he wanted people to understand how important he felt that it was. And I think it really is important. I would ask a question, though, of your statement. First of all, if we really came up with enough money on the state level to have public school funding K through 12 at or above the average of the top ten states, I'm not sure that it wouldn't affect us. It might well be that that level is a higher level than we can afford based on the basic aid system as it works now. And so that's just a question. I don't have the numbers. I don't have the information, but I encourage you to think about it. The other thing that Dr. Prater said last night is that his view of the state's crystal ball on funding and Governor Brown... Well, Governor Brown's not going to be with us much longer, but he thinks it's quite possible that the state will change their basic funding patterns because there are huge inequities between, in some cases, between adjacent districts where some Bay Area districts can spend thirty thousand dollars per student, and the adjacent district, which is not a basic aid district, spends nine thousand dollars per student. And it's not at all clear that the legislature is going to allow those inequalities to continue forever. So I think that this is, I think it really is important. It's just so sad to me to see that our funding is in the bottom ten percent of all of the states. You know what that means? About which states are ahead of us? It means almost everyone. So I think this, I hope that this resolution can do something, and I solidly support it. Mr. Wilson?
There's a couple of things. You know, this, what you were saying about we fall out of basic aid, you know, if things change. Well, basically, what it is, is we would have more, it would have to be a situation where the minimum is more money than we already have.
Oh, yeah. It would be a good thing.
That'd be a good thing, yes. Even though we would be level with most districts in the state. The other really good thing is based on this agreement, which hopefully we'll go through, is that would take more money out of coast pocket and give it to San Luis Coastal where it should go and bring more money back here. Because those are two different, those are two different things because it comes, you know, it comes out of tax dollars. So anyway, just something to mention.
Any further comments? Ms. Held, would you take, record the vote, please?
Member Wilson?
Aye.
Member Brownall?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
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 Next thing on the agenda is to review and approve the 2018, 19, and 2019, 20 academic calendars. I'm going to ask Superintendent Smith to present that. And I'm going to ask him to consider a question as he does that presentation. Is there any reason we shouldn't consider these as a package and vote to approve them at the same time, or consider them at the same time?
No reason that I'm aware of not to consider them together. They're mirrored calendars for two years. I worked with CTA on the calendars. And, you know, any way you slice it, it's one hundred and eighty school days, one hundred and eighty-eight workdays for teachers. The significant changes... Why can I not scroll down a little? I'm sorry, I'm having trouble pulling it up here on my...
It's up on the...
Okay, so the significant changes are for the, over Thanksgiving break in November, students would come to school that Monday, Tuesday, so they would only have Wednesday through Thursday, or Wednesday through Friday off instead of having the whole week off. And then also, if you'll notice, on, in April, spring break is only a week and one day. It is not two weeks like we currently have. So those are the two significant changes. Those changes result in a little bit longer summer. I'd be happy to kick it around.
Do we need a motion first before we can discuss?
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve those two academic calendars.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So I get to speak first. Woo-hoo.
Questions?
I get to go first because I made the, I made the motion. My, my main question was, first of all, hallelujah for the one-week spring break. I always hated that, but my kid's gone now anyway, so I don't care. I hated it. But, but my, as far as the schedule, I don't really care one way or the other, as long as teachers and parents have had input on this.
That's right.
Yeah, so have, have, because this is a huge change for parents. So have they had input into this? Sean, the teachers' union, have you guys?
We don't even have they heard of it.
Okay. So have teachers, have parents been involved in this?
Parents have not been involved in this because our current contract requires us to negotiate the calendar with CTA, which is very unusual to have in a teacher contract. But that's what is in our contract. Normally, you consult with the union, and then as a district can do as you please, and you can bring in parent groups and do whatever. Our current contract makes this a negotiable item with the union. So at that point, it's part of the negotiating table. We could try and change that clause, but it's kind of what it is right now.
Well, I'd like to approve the 1819, but maybe bring in the parents for the 1920 and give them an opportunity to have input. Is there, how would we go about that?
For, oh, for the following year. Yeah, I can work on that and then bring it back to the table and negotiate.
Just let the parents know, because I have, I agree with you. I actually prefer this as well, but there might be parents that hate it, so.
I mean, I just think there should be some parent. I, I thought, did the contract change? Because I always thought it was a consult with the teachers and the, not that it was negotiable.
That's what the law is.
Oh.
But if you make an agreement with a local bargaining unit, it override, if it's more, unless it violates the law, which this doesn't violate the law, but...
No, I understand that. I just thought, I just think ours was that way.
Yeah. First time I've ever seen it.
I would just feel better if the parents had a chance to see this before we approve it, because this is going to be life-changing for some families. You know, I just, I, I...
Well, the other thing, I believe, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Which part is going to be life-changing?
What's that?
Which part is going to be life-changing?
Spring break.
The other part was, I think there was an effort, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, but to align this a little closer to San Luis Coastal.
That's the main emphasis, is getting out that first week of June, so that that's when San Luis Coastal...
Kids can participate in activities that are, that start that second week, which they might really do. Or the kids just haven't, haven't the last...
Well, that makes sense, too.
We do that. We either have to start the first week of August, or we choose, we give up some days in the spring break.
Well, I just want to come, I personally, as a parent, I appreciate that you guys took out the week in April because I feel like then they're just back for such a short amount of time. That was a long time for them to be out. And I know, like, my son, for example, he's like brain fog, and so then he's got to re gear up, do about two more months. So that one, I just, I appreciate the calendar a lot as a parent. I think other parents, like you're saying, probably want to have...
Well, I'm sure we will get varying opinions from parents, but the bottom line is negotiable with the union under our contract.
Well, if the teachers are happy, the school's happy.
They'll do a much better job.
Yeah.
Right, Sean? Guaranteed.
It's interesting, because a couple of years back, we tried to get it till one-week spring break, and the teachers were adamantly against it. So I'm...
The status changed.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question. Sean, this also goes to your planning and obviously Scott and Liz's, but how does the, this mesh with the, you know, trimester thing, you know, the breaks and everything like that, or are they short enough not to impact?
It's basically the same. It's about sixty days of trimester, right, compared to a little bit.
Right, but, but where the, the long, the, you know, the Christmas...
The first break is November, November eighth, before I care.
Wow, it's a love landing. They need to...
The end of trimester is seven, that's the first.
Not like, not like July.
And the second one is February twenty-eighth, is the end of the second trimester. That's roughly the same as you do the first week, March, and that's pretty close.
So actually, because you got shorter breaks, then there's...
Yeah, it's really, you got to change it that much.
So, right now, we have a motion on the floor to approve both calendars. Does anybody want to offer an amendment to that, to consider them one at a time?
Well, I would offer just approving the 1819.
You'd have to make an amendment.
You would have to make that amendment to ask that we consider them separately.
Oh, okay.
You'd like to make that amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Member Brownall has made, moved, made a motion that we amend the current motion so that first, so, well, that first we consider the seventeen, no, the 1819 calendar, and then as a separate item, we consider the 1920 calendar. Is that correct?
Well said.
I'm sorry?
Well said.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second it.
Mr. Wilson seconded it. Okay. So is there further conversation on that?
I just think we need to go with what the teachers want. I, I don't...
Any other conversation? Okay.
I just know I've had parents in the past, actually more address the Wednesday early release while I knew that it was Friday. So I know there actually are parents out there that would like to have input on the calendar. Probably don't know they can have input on the calendar.
We don't, we don't have to follow it.
They don't, they don't have input much. I mean...
I mean, does some, do things like that ever come up in the LCAP discussions where you are having conversations involving lots of parents? Have you heard any...
I think that the one who brought up the Wednesday, that some people like to have an early or late start day sometimes.
Oh, good lord.
But I wouldn't say it's a lot of people coming in. I would say, I've heard of a lot of people who hate it.
Yes, Ron. Morabey does that.
Even the person I refer to referred to the Wednesday early release. All I'm saying, I'm just bringing up, in general, I have had a parent come to me and talk to me about the calendar period. So...
Okay.
I just wonder if there's other parents out there that would like to have input on the...
I wish you'd send them our way.
Send them your way, okay.
We tried it.
I'll just, I'll just ask for input from our administrative staff. Is delaying the consideration of the 1920 calendar a problem for you?
No, it's no problem. I'd like to get the 1819 out there so families can start planning. But we, I can put out a parent square, elicit comments from parents, and see what I get back.
Okay.
And that's a pretty simple process.
So back to what we're going to consider tonight. We have an amendment that would have a split consideration of the two calendars. Is there any further discussion on that amendment? Then, Ms. Held, would you take the vote on the amendment to consider the two calendars separately?
Member Brownall?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
President Tru?
No.
Member Wright?
No.
Member Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, so we will consider the two calendars separately. Is there a motion to approve the school year 1819 calendar?
I'll make a motion if we approve the 1819.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on that motion?
That was a subsidiary motion. So isn't there the main motion still on the floor, or is that knock it out?
No, it's been amended. So we amended the original motion so that we would consider them separately. So, Ms. Held, would you take the vote on the motion to approve the 1819 calendar?
Member Wright?
Aye.
President Tru?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Member Wilson?
Aye.
Member Brownall?
Aye.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is consideration of the school year 1920 calendar. Is there an emotion to approve that calendar?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second. So, so we have a motion and a second to approve the school year 1920 calendar. Is there further discussion?
The only thing, I, I think getting feedback from the parents is good, and there may not be any pushback on this. But I have to think about the logistics of it, but this is something as a survey. But also, it'd be good that, you know, if we have to decide this, it would be through, you know, at a similar time next year, they would be through and see what it was like. And their, their perception may change if you, if you did have any pushback. There may not be. And so that's, because of the changes, people don't know this is happening, so it's going to be a whole new thing. The calendar's just going to be there and, and approved. So by the time it's understood and test run, you know, it'll be partway through the year, and everybody may be on board, and, and we still have the teachers.
May I ask a question?
Sure. I just want to make sure I'm understanding clearly. Are you suggesting that get parent input after they start experiencing the calendar next year? So not get parent input right away and bring it back?
I think both things, but since it's a fait accompli that we're, it's changing, getting it, getting it at the end of this year doesn't really do a lot because they're only experiences the one way, you know. But getting it, getting it at some point into next year when they've experienced, and then setting that calendar, you know, obviously we're setting it in February, they, they would have some experience with the whole thing. That's the only plus I see with that.
So, so my understanding of your suggestion, it's not something that we're voting on. We're just going to vote up or down on the 1920. But you're suggesting that it might be well to not consider that until January of...
I think that would, that would be the plus. And I mean, then we'd be postponing that, right?
How much effect does it have on the school? So basically, you would be talking about calendaring one year at a time instead of calendaring two years in advance. Is that correct?
Since, since there is a change, it just seems, you know, and again, if we're making this decision now in January, making it January of next year, you know, wouldn't, you'd have that input. And, and that, that to me is a plus. So, anyway.
I'm just curious how that's going to impact waiting for a whole year to do 1920, how that's going to impact teachers and their planning. If Sean still goes to Yosemite, you do that a year out. You know, there's so many, as from a teacher's perspective, not having that is, I, I, I don't agree with waiting for a whole year to do the calendar. I would just assume get it approved now. I mean, it's, yes, it's a change. You know, it's a two-year change. It's like, you know, I mean, I just, if this is what the teachers have voted for and what they support, however, if the teachers are supported by us, they're going to do better in the classrooms. And I think that, I think the families can adjust. So I would like to see this approved now.
And I'm thinking of study trips and things of that sort that, that need reservations as much as two years in advance. Particularly, you know, I'm not sure where they go, but...
Yosemite.
Yeah. Yosemite's a really good example because that's standing room only, waiting to get, get a, an opportunity to go, so.
Well, so we approve both of these, and if it doesn't go over well, and you do get flack from the parents, then we can revisit it in 21, 22.
Or they can suck it up.
Okay, is there...
Well, one other thing, just to shoot myself in the foot, it's, it, it does align with San Luis Coastal is a, is a big part of it, so.
Right.
Okay. So are we ready for a vote on the 2019, 20 academic calendar?
Yes.
Yes, we are. Ms. Held, would you take the vote on the 2019, 20 academic calendar?
Member Wright?
Aye.
Member Wilson?
Aye.
Member Brownall?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
President Tru?
Aye. Thank you. The next item on the agenda...
Just to add some clarity, so we're not going to do any parent square, reaching out to the parents.
I'm sorry, what was the vote?
We passed both, we accepted both calendars.
I'd be happy to elicit some inputs sometime. I'll put it in my calendar for beginning next year. And there's nothing to say that can't go back to the teachers' union and talk about it more next year and see if they're interested in amending it.
So the 2021...
For the following year, yeah. There's nothing that prohibits us from doing it.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is number, must be seven point, no, must be 10.4, review and approve disposition of surplus property. The state requires us to consider disposal of surplus equipment. So I'll let Superintendent Smith describe what's going on here.
So our most expensive SDC student that we estimated was going to cost us fifty thousand dollars this year, and in entering kindergarten next year, seventy-five thousand dollars. Transferred to Moot and is going to another district. And we had purchased an iPad to meet her specific needs. And it doesn't match up any of our equipment. It's an oddball piece of equipment with special ed software on. And so we've arranged to sell it to the district that that student will be attending now. But in order to sell it to that district, the board needs to vote to surplus it and allow us to sell it.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the disposition of school district property. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Ms. Held, would you take the vote, please?
Member Wilson?
Aye.
Member Brownall?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
President Tru?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Item five is approval of board policy and board bylaws, first reading. And there are five bylaws that are up for consideration. Four of them are simple CSBA recommended changes to the policy or the bylaw. I would be comfortable entertaining a motion that we consider those four as a group if somebody wants to make that motion.
I move.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So the question on the table, is there any further discussion? The, the question on the table, will the board vote to approve as a package items 5.1, 2, 3, and 4? Ms. Held, would you please ask the board members how they vote?
Member Wilson?
Aye.
Member Brownall?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
President Tru?
Aye.
Member Brownall?
Aye.
Okay. Item five in that package is a consideration of board bylaw 9100 organization. And Member Wright has requested that... And Member Wright has requested that the board consider, uh, an amendment to board bylaw ninety one hundred. So I'll give the floor to him.
Do you want to have a motion first?
N- no, he's gonna introduce it.
Well, originally it says no board.
Just as, as we would ask Scott to give us some background on something, I'm gonna ask Member Wright to give us some background.
Yes, okay.
Board bylaw ninety one hundred.
It says no board member, um, or at least the segment of it, no board member shall serve more than two consecutive years in the same office. We had, just in my, uh, experience last meeting, uh, two of us said that, uh, we weren't interested in, in one of the positions because we hadn't been here very long. And we were comfortable with, uh, with continuing on the way, way it was. I'm not sure that it needs to be, um, two years and instead, um, that we follow the guidelines of, of organization that I see. Where, um, we aren't held to those two years, that we can be elected somehow.
Okay, so, um, so, so Member Wright has submitted, uh, a, a proposal to change that, and I'll just read that. And then you can affirm that that matches your motion. So the motion would be that, uh, board bylaw ninety one hundred be amended by striking the language on page two that says no board member shall serve more than two consecutive years in the same office. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Member Brownout's second to the conversation or discussion. Member Friend?
I actually like that it's no more than two years. Um, I understand what you're saying, if two people didn't want to, well, that gives you two years to get the experience to be able to take an office. And I do think it's nice to rotate, I mean, up at coast, Del Cleg was president forever. And he's now not, you know, that's kind of a, that's nice, but I don't wanna get stuck in a situation like that. I appreciate the fact, and also, this may not come across very well, it would force people that didn't want to to consider being in office. If you ran for this board for a reason, I don't think it would be acceptable to say, no, I'm never gonna take an office. Having it as two years, you've got two years of experience to get there, or there's other board members also. So I'm not in support of striking this from the bylaw.
I can answer how I.
They have to answer first.
Yeah, it, it, it doesn't preclude us from, uh, electing someone else, I think we can do that, uh, each year.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
If we strike, you know, I'm just, I just question the two years, um, of, of force rather than, uh, opportunity.
Public comments?
I, I like it because if we want somebody to serve two years, that's at our discretion. And, um, and, uh, if not, if we feel as a majority we wanna change, then, then we have that option too. And, uh, so it, it really, it's the way most boards work, there's some places that you can see that that doesn't even work, like the board supervisors where they rotated every year.
Except for all, any of them.
Until they didn't, right?
Until that, that, you know, and that was, you know, one of their rules, and it, that didn't help anything, so. So anyway, I, I think it's, it's, uh, it's, it's a good move.
Good move to keep it or strike it?
To strike it.
Mike, uh, Member Brownout, do you, do you wish to speak?
I, I hear what you're saying, and I do think rotation of leadership is important, um, but I don't wanna be forced into it.
This doesn't force anybody, that doesn't, if you strike it, does, does that mean, doesn't mean you're rotating? The vote, you vote every year. This doesn't force you into a rotation.
But I think leaving it the way that it was, doesn't it?
Well, after two years, somebody of the other four needs to do that particular office.
I like the flexibility and balance for total.
Okay, uh, I am in favor of the change. Uh, I, I understand the emphasis on rotation, but I've watched organizations where somebody was thrust into the position of, of responsibility when they were, when they neither wanted it nor were capable of doing it. And I think that any three people here can decide that somebody should not continue in a position they've been in, whether it's one year or two years. And I think we're, we, you know, we're called on to make judgments, and I think this is the type of judgment that our board is capable of making. Any other comments? Uh, Ms. Held, would you request the vote from the board, please?
Member Wilson?
Aye.
Member Brownout? Aye. Member Wright?
Aye.
President Trump?
Aye.
Member Friend?
No. I'm always last.
No, you are the last.
Last three votes I have been.
Sometimes.
And she's on first.
I said first, I thought it was rotational, but obviously she's shooting craps over.
That doesn't matter.
Okay, uh, the next item was originally numbered ten point six. Review approved with two thousand sixteen seventeen developer fee, annual report, and five-year plan.
We have two speakers.
I'm sorry?
We have two speakers on this one.
We have two speakers.
Public comment?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize that, thank you for bringing it to my attention. So we will have public comment on, uh, item ten point six.
But it should be the discussion first.
What, I'm sorry?
Should we hear Scott's presentation so the audience knows?
That's a good idea, thank you.
Um, so we approved the developer fee, uh, annual report last year, um, I'm sorry, last meeting.
Still was last year, you're good.
It was last year.
We did it last year.
It was like. And, uh, trustee Friend brought up some concerns, uh, about, um, the report. And so I contacted, um, legal on the best way to proceed to, um, make it more clearly, um, meet the requirements. Um, so I brought forward an amendment to the plan that explicitly meets all the requirements instead of, um, passively meeting requirements, which I believe the other report did. And so it's here for your review and possible approval. Um, it's a annual reports that happens annually, uh, obviously. And, um, the existing one that we were using was developed after the grand jury reports, um, by Dr. Brusha in conjunction with, um, the county office of education. And all that we were doing was just updating the numbers. In talking to legal counsel about it, um, the statute doesn't require us reporting non-activity. It requires us reporting activity. Um, so this new, um, reports, um, more explicitly also, um, reports non-activity, um, which I think, um, would be clearer for everyone and is an improvement. The other thing is that it breaks out the interest rather than it being embedded in the numbers. It, uh, more explicitly goes into a single year. And so you don't have to, um, do the math between the, um, former one, which was, um, ending balances, um, to determine how much was collected in the previous year. Uh, the math is done for you. So, um, it is more explicitly compliant. Um, on the five-year plan part, the five-year plan part wasn't even due yet, um, but went ahead and rebuilt that too. Um, so the five-year plan isn't much of, is much of an issue, I don't think. But that's kinda how we got here.
Okay, um, so are there two requests for public comment?
Do we discuss first or do we?
We usually have public comment first.
So that's.
You know, I, we might wanna consider changing that as our regular routine, but.
I think we should, but.
Okay, but that's not for tonight's discussion. So the two people are?
Mary McDonald and Gretchen Ross. I gotta get my time, time we're going.
Mary McDonald. Um, board trustees and superintendent Smith. At the December thirteenth, twenty seventeen regular board meeting, this board approved developer fee annual report and fiber plan. The annual report and fiber plan are first posted on the agenda on Friday, December eighth, twenty seventeen, and approved by the board five days later on December thirteenth. Government code sixty six zero zero six requires that this annual developer fee report be posted within one hundred eighty days, and yet this is the year, which it was. Government code also requires report to be publicly posted for a minimum of fifteen days before being approved. Report was approved only five days after it was publicly noticed on the agenda. Rest in mention on the, on the district website that the annual report was posted or available for public review prior to the agenda posted on December eighth. Now there is completely different annual report and fiber plan legal laws amendment on the consent agenda tonight. The first public notice of this amendment is on the agenda for this meeting posted on January twelfth, and it is now on the consent agenda to be approved only five days later. The previously approved fiber plan states currently there are no projects underway that require development funds. The facilities committee will be developing moderate plans for capital improvements. The amendment to this previously approved twenty seventeen plan now states that building projects are needed. One additional classroom gonna cost two hundred fifty thousand dollars commencing this fall. A music room gonna cost three hundred fifty thousand dollars commencing summer of twenty twenty. And office modernization at a cost of one hundred fifty thousand also commencing this fall. Since June twenty seventeen, in closed sessions, this board has been in real estate negotiations to purchase the land in Makayus Creek Road. This real estate purchase is not listed on this fiber plan, nor on annual report, why not? At the October eleventh, twenty seventeen board meeting, Superintendent Smith presented a letter from Schoolside Solutions Inc. focusing on parking of school district proposes additional buildings or replacement from existing buildings. The minimum required number of parking spaces on an elementary site is two point two five spaces for each teaching station. Their accommodation in that letter states, we encourage the district to consider the current number of parking stalls available on the school campus, providing additional parking as needed to accommodate the current needs of this school. So with declining enrollment, Kaiukis gave the new classroom, a music room, where will the view require parking spaces located? The fiber plan is not due until twenty nineteen, but now there is an amendment that proposed improvement projects totaled seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. When did the board discuss these projects on public meeting? Is there an application filed with the state that these projects started in the fall of twenty eighteen? Or did these projects materialize because of a comment made by trustee Friend at the December thirteenth, twenty seventeen meeting, when she questioned if the district should be refunding unspent developer fees?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gretchen Ross, and I guess I'm the only developer here in the room tonight. You're, okay, great. So, the understanding when I go in and I pay my developer fees for building, the new building project, is that these fees are to go toward the impact that develop, the development that I am developing, um, will go towards the impact that my development has on the school. Well, as you can see, I'm one of the largest developers in Kaiukis, and I've built one house, and now I'm building addition, and I have two other projects online in Kaiukis. There's not development going on here in Kaiukis. You know, just little bit of infill and, you know, modifications on the house. Our school is not being impacted at all by development. There is no justification because of development in this school district to be spending money on new classrooms. We all voted, was it ten years ago or so, on two bond measures to build new classrooms for here. And seeing as we do not have escalating enrollment for any reason at all, due to developmental whatever, um, you know, I don't think that this is good governance to spend money just because you've been collecting it. I think it is wrong.
Thank you. Um, okay, so now is there a motion to approve the amended report? As, oh, I wanna, I wanna just clarify something, uh, before we get to that. Member Friend submitted a motion to rescind the previous report. And after discussion.
No, 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 the rescind the motion, it wasn't the report.
Uh, I, I, I.
Words matter.
Well, words, words matter, but.
It said, my, I have it right here if you'd like to see it. My motion was to rescind the motion made December thirteenth, two thousand seventeen at the regular board meeting, action item to review approve the developer fee, report and plan. I rescinded the motion, I didn't say that the report needed to be rescinded.
Okay, uh, the, just to clarify things, the, a motion to rescind is used to cancel a motion altogether. That's consistent with your usage. There can also be a motion to amend something previously adopted, which is to make a change to a previous motion, either by making a simple change to or by substituting something else in its place. So I just wanted to clarify for the, uh, for the board and for the audience, what the options are as far as rescinding, that it is possible either to rescind or to amend an emotion, a, a motion that was previously adopted.
Here's a Robert Schur's book on rescinding is a motion to, to use to quash or nullify a previously adopted motion. My motion to approve would have still left the report there and would have allowed us to approve it within the fifteen-day timeline that's required by posting. I didn't say to nullify the report, the report was posted, even though it wasn't very, a very good report, it was posted within, that, wait a minute, we're getting into debate without a motion.
I, I was just trying to clarify for people what the options were. I, I wasn't debating which we should do, I'm just trying to state.
But that's muddying it to me, it's not.
The understanding of the opportunity to rescind or to amend.
But rescinding the motion wouldn't have deleted the report. It would have stopped the approval. The report still would have been there.
I, I understand that that's your understanding of the situation. Okay, so what we have presented to us on the agenda this time is, um, a, a motion to amend the two thousand sixteen seventeen developer fee annual report. Now, is there? Uh, does anyone care to make that motion?
I'll make a motion, I'll amend.
Is there a second?
We're amending the, I'm confused. We're amending whether we're going to approve, we're amending this before we approve it?
No, no, it's an amendment of a, of a previous vote.
This is the amendment.
Oh, this is the amendment of the one, okay, and we're voting whether to approve this one.
We're amending. We're amending the previous, the report that was previously submitted, and the way that we're amending it is that we're replacing the old report
With this one.
With a new one. So is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
I object to consideration of the question.
You object to consideration of the question?
Yep, doesn't need a second, it's not debated.
I, I know that, but it requires, in order, so, member Friend has asked that we not consider the motion that's here. Her, her action is perfectly legitimate, it's at the right time. But in order for her motion to carry requires the two-thirds vote, it's not a simple majority vote. Two-thirds of five is a number that doesn't work very well. But it turns out the parliamentary description of that is that four of our five members would have to vote in favor of her motion in order for it to be carried. And if her motion is carried, then we're done, we will have no further discussion of this motion tonight. So the next order of business is to vote on member Friend's motion to, what were you...
Objection, it's objection to consideration of the question is the proper name of the motion.
Okay, so we have an objection to consideration. So if, if you, if you vote a, a vote in favor...
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Ron, I can hear you telling, saying that I'm opening a can of worms. Can you please not do that?
If, okay, so just to clarify things, and I don't have that reference in front of me. I wanna make sure I get it right, because I, I wanna make sure that people know...
You can look at this one, but it's a lot smaller.
No, so we, we have a motion, it's made appropriately. And, and I just want to make sure that we get the ayes and the nays right. So this says the, shall the question be considered? As many as are in favor, raise your right hand, those opposed, raise your right hand. There being two-thirds, do you, let's look at the language on, on that, I'm sorry. Okay, the chair immediately takes the vote by asking, shall the question be considered? So a vote that is positive says, yes, we will consider the item under consideration. So in order to sustain the objection to consideration, there have to be four no votes. Is that clear?
So, just to reiterate, because I, it sounds backwards.
It, it does, that's why I wanted to...
To support what Carrie wants to do.
You have to vote no.
Which is to...
Which would not allow us to vote on this. We have to vote no on Carrie's...
Objection to the consideration.
Like Carrie's objection, we're voting no to you objecting.
Okay, so the, I'm gonna try, one more set of words.
No, that's backwards.
Shall the question be cons... wait, okay. I'm gonna pose the question, shall the question be considered? Unless two-thirds of the assembly vote in the negative, the question will be considered. So a yes vote says that we will consider the original question, and a no vote says that we will not consider the original question.
The original question is?
Question is the motion.
This motion to approve this document.
Right. So the original question is, shall we replace the, shall we amend the, the original developer fee annual report by replacing? That was the original motion.
You gotta vote on the objection to the consideration.
What we're lacking maybe is the reason why we are even considering the amendment.
It's not debated.
Well, it's, she has made a proper motion, and it's not debatable.
Great.
I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting when you weren't here.
Oh. Okay, Ms. Hill, would you pull, pull the, get the board's response to the question, shall the question be considered?
Okay, ready?
I think so.
Member Brownell?
Oh, come on.
Hannah?
It's yes or no, they're all...
But I don't know, I mean, I think I wanna say no. And a no means yes to...
Shall the question be considered? If, if you say no, that's a vote against considering this motion at all.
No.
If you say, wait a second.
Okay.
Not this motion, the original motion.
Right.
She's thinking you're saying this one.
So the question you are answering is, shall the motion that says we will approve and amend the two thousand sixteen seventeen developer fee annual report and five-year plan? That's the original question.
Right.
Shall we approve that?
And that's, but that's not what...
Now there's a motion that says we, an objection to the consideration. Okay, and the way you vote on that is, shall the question, the original question be considered? You're gonna answer yes or no to that?
So again, we're, if we say no, then we're not objecting to hearing this, because I'm going...
That's right. No, you're answering the simple question, do you wanna consider?
If you agree with me, it's a no. If you wanna talk about it, it's a yes.
Right, it says, the question you're answering is, shall the original question be considered? A no means we aren't gonna consider it. I, I know it seems backwards, but that's the way it is. And, and it would take...
If I'm saying yes, I'd like this to be considered, that seems straight ahead, you're talking about it.
Okay, but we're stuck, we, we didn't write Robert's rules of order, we're stuck with what we have.
Okay, but, but again, for clarity, because I, is if I, for example, want to consider a vote on this, not put it aside before we have a vote, so I should vote yes on this motion, and then we move on to this unless four of us vote, okay, got it?
Okay.
I think I got it.
So if you wanna consider that, you vote yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Next.
So that was a yes for member Brownell.
Yes.
Not a no. Member Wright?
You voted?
Yes.
Because we won. I know what we, we, I know what I want. Yes.
President Truitt?
Yes.
Member Friend?
No. Shocking.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you for raising that, we are gonna consider the question that's here. So, we, we have a motion, and
No discussion.
Did we, and we had a second to the motion, and then we were properly interrupted by member Friend to ask that we not consider. So, so we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yes.
And since that came from staff, you'd like to speak first, is that correct?
I have a quest, I mean, I have some comments, so I don't...
Okay, please, speak.
The, I think that this, replacing it, still, we didn't meet the fifteen-day requirement before. We're still not meeting it with this. And the way that it's phrased, pursuant to Education Code, section seven, one five, whatever, the district is authorized to assess and collect a fee from development projects when, hold on, I meant to go to the next page, I apologize, it's late. For the five-year plan, every student who enrolls in a school district creates a cost associated with the need to provide adequate, appropriate educational facilities. When new dwelling units are constructed, they add to the facility needs based on the potential for students coming from those units. We have declining enrollment. So what this looks like to me in that sentence is saying that we're having increasing enrollment. Our first interim report says it is declining enrollment, so this doesn't, there's a nexus that you have to meet in order to use those development fees. The nexus requirement is between the development for which these fees are collected and the use of fees. So listening to what Gretchen Ross mentioned too, we're not being impacted. Additionally, the developer fees dues and don'ts and document that I attempted to provide to everybody when I made my agenda requests. Page three, question four, school districts may not expend developer fees merely to modernize or improve existing facilities. Oh, there's office modernization up there. Okay, we can't do that, it says that in the developer fees dues and don'ts. Now, just because our auditor may not say that, if, if our auditor is the only fiscal oversight, I'm not comfortable with that. This has been in all the different documents, what you can and cannot use it for. So we haven't experienced increasing enrollment, so I don't see how it can be used for a portable. Is that additional classroom a portable? I mean, that was mentioned at the last meeting, and the, I don't understand, how is a music classroom considered a proper use of developer fees? Same report, page two, because developer fees are imposed on new development within a school district, the fees collected may only be expended to accommodate students generated from the new development. I don't see new development in town producing a classroom full of musicians. It's just not happening. So I disagree that we approved it before, we didn't meet the fifteen-day requirement, that report still wasn't that good. But my rescinding the motion would have at least let us have our fifteen days. This, I don't think any of these things on here are proper use of developer fees. I'm done.
Do you want me to respond to any of this?
I'm sorry, can I ask a question of member Friend?
Certainly. But, yes, you can ask a question.
I can't.
Yeah. You just can't ask it of member Friend.
That's what he said. He wants to ask me a question.
Trying to catch up. I'm, I'm, it interests me, if one additional classroom, I'm not sure, as you're saying, is that needed for declining enrollment? Have we looked back far enough to see how enrollment fluctuates? In other words, I'm looking at the kindergarten class that I was in recently, and I think it was at twenty-two, which is a pretty good-sized kindergarten class. And so how do I know what the trend is going to be for the number of students coming in the following year, the year after that, and so on? The music room, I would disagree there, I think that, that, just in seeing what I saw earlier, where music is, is being done now, I think a music room would be very appropriate. So my question, my question really is, are you saying no to these changes? Or just how money is used, and, and what is it that, that you think this money should be used for?
It's not what I think the money should be used for, it's what government code says it should be used for.
Good, so what does government code say we can use the money for? That's what I need to know.
It said, for developer fees, the money can be used for impacts that this development produced extra kids came to our school. So the impact, it's developer fees are to mitigate the impacts from increased students coming to the school from development. I don't, I'm not discounting that we need a music room. It's not developer fees, it says office modernization is not a reason for, you can't, it says it explicitly.
So two hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and five cents is gonna sit there? What are, what are you saying? That's a lot of money. Can Scott answer this?
So I, I'd be happy if you'd like to address some of these questions. Please do, I just don't wanna interrupt the board. So statute requires that the, that the information be available fifteen days prior to board approval. Not posted, not advertised, available. As far as the nexus between the need to collect developer fees, that nexus is established through the justification study that this district paid to have done. I believe in twelve thirteen, if my memory is... Or have I been thirteen, fourteen?
February of two thousand fourteen.
And this board adopted. So that nexus is in that developer fee justification study. And that nexus is word for word up there, out of the developer fee study. In that dues and don'ts document, while it's a useful resource, it also made a statement in there that it had to be mailed. Isn't true either.
It doesn't say that, it says, if, it says if people request it, those people that request it.
Not in the dues and don'ts, okay. In the statute, it says if they request it, that's correct. And we did not have anyone request it, so we did not have to mail it to anyone. To merely to modernize, I don't know what that dues and don'ts document has as a definition of merely. But in our justification study that was adopted by this board in two thousand fourteen, one of the projects in there was exactly to modernize office. So at one point, people believed it was appropriate to spend those monies on that. The ultimate oversight on that, though, is the auditor. So before any modernization money would ever be spent, we would check with our audit firm for their latest interpretation of case law and statute to determine if we were spending them properly or not, prior to spending them. That's the beauty of having an auditor and a relationship with an auditor, is you can go back and forth with them to make sure you're in compliance with these things. Any new, new capacity in general is usually inappropriate, considered an appropriate use. So an additional classroom is one of the most basic things, whether it's a music classroom or a regular classroom, I don't think is material. As far as the fluctuation of enrollment, justification studies are based off of future enrollment and the possibility of development impacting future enrollment. It is not based off of historical trends. So while we may speculate and say, last year we didn't get any new kids from development because most of the houses built were vacation houses or second houses or whatever, we don't know that going into the future. So the justification study is what provides the justification for that. Once that study is done, and this board adopts it, and this board adopted to implement developer fees after that, that's a done deal. If this board chose to revisit the developer fee issue, it could. But the, as far as the nexus, the nexus is established at the developer fee study. But the, as far as the nexus, the nexus is established at the developer fee study justification report. And then, the other thing is that I did review our kinder numbers, and I spoke to the people that did our justification study in two thousand fourteen recently. They are already, I spoke to them a month and a half ago, or two months ago. They're already starting to work on updating our eligibility at this state by extrapolating the numbers out from our current kinder to predict future enrollment. And when you have a bump in kinder enrollment, which we do right now, that is the best time to reapply for eligibility at the state for state matching funds for facility development. So I'm in the process of doing that, updating our eligibility at the state. But projections are projections. Right now, we have a bump in kinder enrollment, so now's a good time for us to go back to the state and update that eligibility. Does, does that necessarily mean that we'll have growing enrollment? No. It may or may not, but that's out in the future, and we don't know that. So, so I think I, I went item by item, trying to address the concerns, but bottom line is, I do want to apologize to this board for just updating the previous report and not going through it thoroughly. And I wasn't very concerned about the five-year plan because it wasn't due yet. But the normal operating process of most districts in this state at this point is to include the five-year plan with the annual plan. That way, they never miss the five-year plan, because there are severe penalties for missing the five-year plan. And, but none of those penalties are realized unless you're sued over it.
I want to make a motion. In particular, I want to make a motion to postpone this discussion for three months until the April meeting. And the reason I want to do that is because I appreciate Superintendent Smith's work, and I think he did a good job in getting this ready. But when you're in a small staff district, things get crunched, and I think we've been crunched. And my suggestion would be that we agree to postpone this item until the April meeting and direct Superintendent Smith to organize a committee that would have two board members on it and other people from the community who you think might be able to contribute to the conversation and bring a, a report back in April that is perhaps a little bit more fleshed out and something that we have had the opportunity to discuss in more detail.
I have a question.
I, I made a motion, so we, we can't, so somebody has to second it, or, and, and a motion to postpone supersedes the discussion of the main motion. Otherwise, you know, otherwise we'd go back and forth between the two. So if there is no second, then my motion dies, and that's fine. If there is a second, then we have to vote on the motion to postpone.
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there discussion on the motion to postpone?
My concern still is, is that the other report is not correct, and this is gonna extend that out for three years, or for three months.
So Carrie, um, because these kind of trip over each other, I mean, the issues in here could affect our decision to either postpone or deal with it right away. So there, there are a couple of things here that I don't think were the same question that people were having, or their answers to those things, which might influence how they would vote on your motion. So, you know, it's like, I'd like to, you know, Carrie and Val address specifics before we go.
Okay, well, you can't do that.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
We have a motion that has been seconded.
Yeah.
Then what's the further discussion?
What's the further discussion?
Whether you're gonna postpone or not, yes or no.
So we're just discussing whether we're, we have only, we just discussed.
Right now.
Why we might postpone, which is kind of.
So is there further discussion on the motion to postpone? No. Ms. Held, would you ask for the vote, please?
Member Wright?
Aye.
President Trump?
Aye.
Member Brown?
Aye.
Member Wilson?
Aye.
Member Brown?
Aye.
Thank you. So we will postpone this motion until April, and so we have requ, we have directed Superintendent Smith to constitute a committee so that we can have broader input. Thank you.
Carry your jacket and your water.
Okay. That completes all the items in the ocean, open session agenda.
No, we have the consent agenda ones that we put back.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Professional development.
So we moved from the consent agenda, item nine-point-four and nine-point-five. Item nine-point-four is a request for approval of board member professional development. There are two requests, one submitted by Member Wilson, one by Member Friend. The documentation that is in Agenda Online repeats our board policy that its members need training that helps them understand their responsibilities, stay abreast of new developments in education, and develop boardmanship skills. Member Wilson has submitted a request to attend the Small District Association Conference in February. Member Friend has submitted a request to attend the CSBA Legislative Action Day on March twelfth and thirteenth.
Do we vote this separately?
Beg pardon?
Do we vote this separately, or together, or how does?
They're different requests, I think we have to consider them separately. And we'll take them in the order that they're mentioned here, so that Member Wilson's request is mentioned first. So Member Wilson has estimated a cost of around seven-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. And it's, it's to attend the Small School District Association Conference.
Mine's first, and then's Ron's, if that makes a difference. Mine is first, and then's Ron's, if that makes a difference.
Yours is not first.
In the overview, Ron's is first, and yours is third.
Ron's is first.
I don't care.
If I'm correct, did, did we nominate you, did we elect you as a representative to the Small School Districts Association?
That's not a, that's not a December thing.
I don't think that's on like the thing, okay.
I didn't pull these, so I don't.
So, so we have a board member request. Is there discussion?
Yes. I am, I asked for these to be pulled. I'm a little bit concerned about the SSDA. This is the flyer I was trying to get, Scott, that we were mentioning earlier. You mentioned the SSDA conference, so I went to look there. So I don't know what SSDA has to do with capital advisors, when you said capital advisors called you. This is all I wanted, and they weren't mailing it to me directly. But I'm looking at this flyer, I don't see why we need to have our superintendent and a board member go to this. I think one would be sufficient, and if you look at the different strands, I think governance is a great one, but I don't see that, the necessity for a board member and a superintendent to go to this one. But I don't see what the benefit to the district would be, especially in light of the fact that when SSDA has been discussed, I know you were resistant to call them regarding the high school options because coast is involved, and I know you've said the same thing, so if you're resistant to call them, I just don't understand the draw of wanting to go to a conference to get small school district stuff, when you guys have both stated that they probably won't help us.
That's a different issue.
I'm, I'm gonna have to take a break. You can continue the discussion, as long as you'll be here.
Is it a thousand dollars each, or a thousand dollars for both of you?
Um, so as far as cost, even though you guys approved the X of one for me, because of scheduling, I decided not to attend, did not register, didn't cost us anything. So the one you approved for me last month is not happening. As far as the cost, are you asking about the cost on this one?
Yeah, just because, I mean, weren't you highlighting just the, that our expenses are, just areas that we can trim money that were in our budget report?
No.
What were you talking about then earlier, that, that our expenses, you were looking for areas that we could trim, because in our budget report, that's something?
That's the governor, no, that's the governor, what they're gonna be doing to, no. That was different, but the governor, what they said at the report today is if the LCFF monies are changed and whatnot, all districts are gonna have to be, depending on where they want to cut. I wasn't looking, hadn't looked at ours yet.
Well, no, because you mentioned it when we got our book, we have our little book of finances, you were highlighting that we were moving into, our expenses were.
Oh, or deficit spending.
Yeah. So I'm just.
Oh, not today, right, yeah, at, at previous meeting, yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, just, I'm just trying to be more conscientious of the amount of money we're spending, given the fact that you did go to CSBA.
Thank you.
Yeah, so maybe, you know, I don't know, but some of this stuff can, needs to be looked at financially, I think, and considered in terms of our overall budget.
Me? If you add something, this is something.
It's gonna benefit the school. That's what I want to know.
What's your primary reasons for going?
Well, because SSDA deals with specific issues for small school districts, which are different than, than.
Have you ever been to one?
Yes, I've been, in the last, in the last twenty years, I've been to about six of them.
Do they, do they create a, a situation where you can bring some of the problems that you deal with compared to others?
It's much easier because of the size of it and that they're specific. So a question that might, you might be in a room of thirty or forty people at, at CSBA, it's a smaller group, and they're, the people are there to answer questions or deal with things that are specific to small school districts.
Such as?
Well, what was the one that they just made a slight change to about the contracting? I can't remember, where you, you had to have the certain certification for people doing work at this, on a school site?
Oh, DIR regulations?
Yeah.
And they just modified the thresholds for that?
Right. So, so small school districts were impacted because you had people who you wanted to have do work, or local people, had to spend more than the job would ever pay, pay for, and they had to do it each year. And so, this is just a small example, but, so SSDA, since this was impacting people, they couldn't get work done on their schools. They addressed the issue, they, they started with workarounds, so you, they helped districts be able to do it, and then they pushed through legislation, they got backing from the different boards who were affected, and they pushed through legislation to change this requirement. So this is just a, a small thing, but some, you know, you go to legal issues, it's the same kind of structure.
Have you choose, have you looked at this to decide which ones you want to go to? Because I would like to.
I looked at it earlier, I didn't bring a marked-up copy because I didn't think I was gonna have to defend what I was doing. To say something specific is, using your same logic, you shouldn't have gone that.
Uh, 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 well.
No, 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 I have to say this, while you were gone, the question of the, you know, it being appropriate, why people needed to go, you, I, I can say that the same logic applies to, one, Scott could have gone, one board member could have gone to CSBA, and, and that would be sufficient, well.
There's a lot more strands in the means of CSBA.
No, but, no, but see, your, your.
Okay. You, you two are not gonna have a debate in the middle of the board meeting. That is not the way board meetings work.
Okay, Carrie.
Okay, so.
I, I will, I, 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 this was pulled, it was, it was questioned about the, the reasons why this should happen, and we each have our areas and our venues that we think will do more for the district, and I, to be, to be told that, that this isn't appropriate in one board member's opinion, when I've supported, because I, I don't make that decision because other board members may, you know, they're getting what they get out of the conferences they go to.
Ron, I think, I think, I think that I asked the question that, that obsoled, I just wanted to know what benefit the school gets from it, rather than, than.
Okay. All right. I'm, I'm sorry, it struck a nerve that.
Well, I just feel, because in life, I, my comment in the last board meeting, when I feel like some of these conferences are a waste of district money in general, you did not vote on that one, so, I mean, I will, I will approve for you to go to this, but in the future, I just have a problem with spending that kind of money for, I think, what we're getting out of it at the end of the day. I think there's many other ways that we, there's so many ways of gathering information for what we need to do what we need to do for your and this district, it's not gonna cost two thousand dollars.
Well, actually, I mean, if you want to get into specifics, I did this before Scott made the decision, and we would drive together, which would cut out, would.
Yeah, that's the opposite.
But we're not, we're getting into it here.
I'm, I'm good.
And, and just one more thing, Val, this, going to these things for years also built up a network of people you can go to, board members of other districts and superintendents and stuff who are dealing with issues, and they let you know how their successes happened and what the pitfalls were, and they understand it because they're working with districts of similar size. And, you know, that's been invaluable over the years, because we've, we've grown and done things in part through that information, so.
So I'd, I'd like to make a comment, if I may. I have been to SSDA, I went to SSDA probably the first year I was on the board, possibly the second. And I found it useful to understand the concerns that we had in common with other small school districts, because small school districts really are different. I mean, if you go to a, I don't know how many of you have had the experience of going to CSBA, and they pull the group about how big your school is, your school district is, and, and you know, when you say two hundred, they're, they're, they're saying, what? How can you do that? And you know, there are differences that are really distinct for groups that work with very small staff, there are connections to be made, there are also things, the other thing that I can think of that SSBA lobbied for was with the reserve cap, because the reserve cap affects small school districts much more than it affects Los Angeles Unified. And, and I think there are things to learn there. It is our board policy that we will educate our board members. The, the amount of money that we spend, I, I understand that the amount of money spent is significant. But if, if each one of us went to something that cost a thousand dollars, that, that's five thousand dollars. That's less than a tenth of one percent of the school district budget. And like, I mean, it's, it's a really, really tiny, you know, some, some boards pay their board members. There are lots of other things that, that we don't have. Um, I'll, I'll just pick up on another thing that I know that you have had a discussion with one of the people in the administration of the SSDA. And, and you learned something about some potential legislation that SSDA is considering and trying to build support for. And uh, it was one of your objectives was to meet with her and to further develop that relationship. And know more about what their proposed legislation is. Uh, I think that those things are important. So, um, I will vote to approve all, all three of these resolutions. Uh, that's just where I am.
I'd like to clarify what I said, Ron, it wasn't a personal attack on you, I said I don't think it's necessary for every board member and a superintendent. I think reading what these, what's listed here, having one person from the district is sufficient. It wasn't you personally, I just don't, I still believe it's not necessary for two. Based on what they're being offering, the, the topics.
Okay, so. I feel the reverse, I think that a board member and a superintendent should go. Because that, that creates some communication between the two, uh, and they become on the same wavelength, I like that. Um, I'm. Let's, do we have, uh, we don't have a specific motion, because we, uh, am I correct that nobody was made?
I thought we did have one.
Yeah, I think we have a motion. A motion to approve.
Pretty sure.
Hannah?
I don't think you have a motion.
I, I don't think we did either.
For, for Mr. Wilson's request.
I make a motion to approve Mr. Wilson's uh request for professional development.
I second it.
Is there further discussion? Um, will you take the vote, please?
Member Wright?
Aye.
President Trump?
Aye.
Member Bren?
No.
Member Wilson? Member Brownell?
Aye.
Um, is there a motion to prove, uh, to approve Member Friend's request to attend?
CSBA legislative.
Legislative Action Day.
I'll move, I can make it.
Is there a second? A second for Member Wright? Is there further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to know what Legislative Action Day is. Why do you want to go to that?
That's what it says there, for benefit to the district, it's a full day of advocacy meetings between school governance leaders and members of the legislature. You go up to Sacramento and they have you in meetings with your particular legislators, seeing what's um happening at the moment. For example, today at the budgets workshop, um Cunningham, Jordan Cunningham is one of our uh, assembly members. He was pushing stuff for education, so it's just depending education related, what's going on. And I will say, I neglected on my estimated costs, I neglected to put a, um, the car rental on there, so however much the car would cost. I, that just slipped my mind, so it'd be not that much more.
And you're not really traveling back in time, so all those dates are really supposed to be eighteen.
Oh, correct. Yes, yes, two thousand eighteen.
Okay, uh, is there further discussion?
Well, if this is regarding the Legislative Action with Carrie McDonald and you're trying to get information to.
It's not.
No.
It's not, it's totally, totally separate, I mean.
So how does that help us and benefit our district right now? How is this information and you going?
Legislation that's going through education wise right now, like I wrote down, um. With the release of the governor's budget and the fully funded LCFF, I imagine talking points for here, because they, they come up with talking points. Will be what to do with an anticipated one point four billion that was previously used to fill gaps. So with LCFF funding, schools got extra money to fill gaps, those gaps are gonna be gone, so they're gonna be discussing legislation to figure out, okay, where does that gap money go? You know, so we would be talking to our own, well, we, anyone from around here. We'll be talking with our legislators on the education committees or our local people to say, hey, this is what we want to do with the money or what we suggest or have them tell us, this is what we need from you, as school districts.
Can we qualify being basically a district or?
We're a member of CSBA.
Okay, uh, further discussion. Um, we will have a vote on Member Friend's request to attend Legislative Action Day.
Member Bren?
Aye.
Member Wilson?
Aye.
Member Brownell?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
President Trump?
Aye.
Okay, the next uh item on the agenda is to consider Superintendent Smith's request to approve the Small School District Association Conference in February.
I make a motion to approve.
A second?
I don't remember why I wanted to pull it, so let's just vote.
So it's been moved and seconded that we approve Superintendent Smith's request to uh attend SSDA. Can we make that a consensus agreement and not poll group?
Time frame.
Yes, by, by consensus, Hannah. Okay, so now.
You got a good point.
We're done with everything on the open agenda and we have to return to closed session.